First of all, we're going to do a public hearing on the budget. A quorum being present, the first order of business to hold a public hearing on amended budget prepared in tentative form as set forth in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education held on April 10th, 2018. The Secretary of the Board of Education had admitted an affidavit and certificate of publication from the landmark stating that an amended budget for District 208 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2018 was placed on file and was conveniently available at the district's administrative offices. Notice was given that a public hearing on tentative budget will be held at 7:00 PM on May 22nd, 2018. Due notice has been given of the public hearing on the budget and all other statutory requirements preliminary to holding of such public hearing has been complied with. Dr. Skinkis and Mr. Bernicke will present and explain the amended 2017-18 budget and answer any questions from the board.
There are only three or four additions to the fiscal year 2018 budget. Scott, if you can just highlight those and tell Mary on what page you want to go to so the board can see and the public can see him highlighted in green.
If you go to Board Book page number nine, there are four main items that are reflected in the amended budget. Number one, there was the bond refinancing that is reflected in the budget of approximately $22 million of the bond refinancing. There was the issuance of a $3 million working cash bond, an issuance of a $1.86 million life safety bond, and there was one additional working cash transfer of $70,000 from working cash to capital projects. Those were the four main items that are reflected in the amended budget. All the details are within this budget in the actual sections of the revenue and expense that is out there.
That is out where?
To the public.
Okay, in Board Book?
In Board Book.
Okay.
You mean on our website?
It's on the website and also tonight here in Board Book.
Okay, because Board Book is not public if I...
The meeting's agendas are public after the meeting. There were only, there was only one or two questions submitted from Mr. Walsh who's not present, and that was on the two columns adding up on what page?
On the summary page, which would be Board Book page 12. In this form that is presented to the board, this is the general ledger form, there is a discrepancy between the $15,000 transfer of interest from the debt service fund to the education fund. In the general ledger account, it shows the revenue and expenditure in it. In the ISB form, it does not show the $15,000 as a transfer as an expenditure. So there is a discrepancy between what ISB accepts and what the general ledger is. It is accounted for in this. It will be submitted to ISB with the correct $15,000 transfer on their summary page. I have confirmed with our auditor today to make sure that it is correct and went through it. That was the only question that was really submitted with, within this amended budget.
Does anyone else have any questions on board?
No.
The meeting will now be open for public discussion on the items that were amended
in the budget. Anyone choosing to make any statements? Okay, seeing none, there's no comments. I declare the public hearing on the budget completed, and the regular meeting will now proceed. All right, what are we onto now?
Recognitions.
Recognitions.
Kristen, you want to read the names? Do you have, is there certificates tonight, Mary Ann?
Yeah, there's certificates here.
Can somebody from the board pass out the certificates?
Laura, do you want to do that?
I'll leave Kristen with the names. The following students competed in the Illinois Council of Teachers in Mathematics competition in February and qualified for the state competition. The ICTM state competition was held on May 5th at the University of Illinois. Congratulations to a senior who was recognized for competing all four years, Jackson Hager. Oral's team earned ninth place, again, Jackson Hager and Jason Kenny. And state competitors, Caitlin Gaynor, Mary Claire Greenlease, Haley Jurgens, Luca Malovik, Radka Purbo-Pirnok, Andreas Resto, Joseph Vitak, Jacob Wardzala, and Elise Wojjak.
Have any of the students present tonight?
Don't believe so.
Okay, let's have a round of applause for all the students. You know, tonight, we have a presentation later tonight by our two interim Assistant Principals for Athletics, but being the recognition part of the board meeting, I wanted to take this opportunity in front of the Board of Education and on behalf of the Board of Education. John and Tom, if you can come forward here for a minute, please, be recognized, just like a student would be recognized.
Right.
I don't have a certificate for you, but I thought maybe you could shake Ms. Haruska's hand and we'd get that on TV.
I'm glad to. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. I thank all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, John.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Tom. John Tribe and Tom Domon have been our interim Assistant Principals of Athletics for the last three years. They stepped in when Art Ostrow submitted his resignation in the summer to leave for Hinsdale South. They stepped in and they've helped the building administration and the staff to keep our athletic department moving first and foremost, but also put some things in place with budgeting, with our boosters clubs, with some of our tournaments that we host, aligning some procedural things with the expectations that the board had, and so they've really done an outstanding job. And I don't know if they get enough credit. It's hard when you come to a new school, especially as a retired former administrator, to try to win over the staff and they get into a new culture, but they both did a great job over the last three years. And on behalf as the superintendent, I just want to say thank you for stepping up and helping us out, and I know the board really appreciates it as well.
Thank you.
We have some students here tonight, Kristen. Who are these?
We also had one additional.
Oh, that's right.
Computer Science Recognition.
That's right. She's at the conference right now, I'm sorry.
So Sandy Cheko was selected as one of five recipients of the 2018 Computer Science Teachers Association Info System Foundation USA Awards for Teaching Excellence. Sandy has done an excellent job of building the computer science program at RB, and we are very proud of her and her accomplishments. The official announcement of this award, I believe, was made today at the Crossword Conference Info Systems Foundation Signature Thought Leadership Conference. And as a recipient of this award, Sandy will receive registration, housing, and airfare to attend the event in Scotts Valley, California, and will also be a VIP guest, all expenses paid to the 2018 Computer Science Teachers Association Annual Conference held in July in Omaha, Nebraska.
Sandy could not be here tonight because she's getting the award as we speak, or she's at the first conference, correct?
She's at the first conference. I believe she got the award either yesterday or today.
Okay. So Sandy does a great job with our computer science program. Before we go into the superintendent's report, sort of principal's report, I think we have the new student association reps present tonight.
Is that who it is? Will we bring them up and they can introduce themselves to the board?
They have to go through their initiation.
Yes. Oh, boy.
Hello, we are the new 2018-2019 Student Exec Board. I'm Michelle Jacobs. I will be the president.
I'm Rowan Aller. I'm the vice president.
I'm Jessica Jarrett. I'm the secretary.
I'm David Woz. I'm the vice, or student spokesperson.
I'm Taylor Jurgens. I'm the treasurer.
I'm Sarah Plesky. I'm Director of Communication. We're all super excited to start the school year. We have already begun planning freshman orientation and thinking of things for homecoming. So, we're very excited.
Are there any questions from the board? Oh, it's not that easy. Don't step away.
Any questions?
Got it. Somebody give them one question.
So did the prior group give you guys pointers on what to do in front of us?
Not really.
Did they just stuck you out here?
They'd be hanging. It was in the water, but...
Tomorrow's our last, like, meeting with them, so they're going to go over the last final jobs.
Oh, that's what they're going to tell you about the dress code.
Just kidding, he's kidding. So in June and July, you get those months off. The board meets once in August. Basically, the Board of Education likes to have a student association report once a month. We don't make you come over here for summer break, but when the board meets in August, I think it's right around the first day of school or shortly before the first day of school, it's the second Tuesday of August. And so it's just nice for you to come and update them on the activities you're working on, things that are upcoming that you'll be working on, anything that you need their support with or like to inform them about, because you're the main reason they're here is to support the student body. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Best of luck, you guys, on your share. Have a great time. Now, the other thing you do, you guys don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting. You guys... All right, now the...
Do you have any presidents?
No, there's nothing on presidents' reports.
Superintendent's report. We met as a curriculum advisory council last week. We'll, they'll be a part of the meeting in June when we'll be bringing that to the board. We're not updating anything on the board tonight, correct? We just talked about some things we're looking at for the curriculum guide for upcoming next fall, facilities advisory meets this week, finance advisory met in the first week of May to go over the budget. You'll see tonight as a first read. Personnel Advisory Council has not met. They just received a new press packet and, or policy advisory, and there's nothing on the personnel agenda.
All right. Parents' organization reports. First one up is the Boosters Club.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I assume you guys want me to sit here?
Sure.
Instead of standing up on my backside.
State your name for the group if you could.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Tom Hartwig. I am the president of the Sports Boosters Club. For those of you who aren't, oh, before I go that far, I want to thank, obviously, the board for your support, administrative staff, especially John and Tom, who were instrumental in helping to make sure that the boosters move in a good direction, give us lots of ideas and help us along. For those of you who might not be aware, the Sports Boosters Club is basically set up to help raise money to donate to the athletic programs for the school. We've done a lot of that. The basic jobs that we do is we run concessions, both inside and outside. We sell spirit wear. We've added spirit wear online stores as well. And one of the other things we've done is we try to do one a month of the Chef's Night Out, is what we call. Those are local fundraisers at Chick-fil-A, Saler Nose, Pops, pretty much any organization, any restaurant that's willing to do one of those. We try to make sure we do those one a month. I believe you guys have the report that we submitted, so I won't read through the whole report. Some of the things that were asked, that you guys had asked for us to talk about, our officers would have been elected last Thursday, but we had to move the meeting a week because we had several people missing. So our new officers will be elected this Thursday when we meet. One of the things we changed from the boosters in the past, we've been a four-member board, which was fairly odd when I first came in, so in the new bylaws that we wrote, we took the bylaws from a four-page document to about 12 to try and cover everything that the club should be doing and best practice. One of those things is expanding to a five-member board to make voting a little bit easier. With four, it's tough. If two of us, if four of us don't decide two and two, it's hard to split it. So that's one of the main things that we're doing with that. The financials, I believe you guys were given that. I'll do a real brief rundown of that report. As you can see, everything that was revenue for us this year came out to $78,750.06. Expenses were $68,711.07 with a profit loss of $10,038. That is not our current, our current revenue or financial or what we have in the bank right now. We do have more than that. We'll have, at the meeting on Thursday, we'll get a final standing. We do have more than that in the bank. This income expense report was prepared this way just to show what we've brought in, what we've expended. One of the big things we have in here is equipment purchases of $11,200. So over the year, we have been continually expanding what we have. We've spent $3,000 of that. This reflects $8,000 that we have agreed to purchase in a new refrigerator, freezer, pretzel machine, warmer, those items, just to make the concession stands run more efficiently. Also, a refrigerated rail for condiments, so they're not just sitting out on the, on a table getting warm, so we can keep those safe and fresh for everyone. Those are the main points of what is going on in, with the financials. Are there any questions on the financials?
Tom, do you guys still have a web, do you have a website or is it an updated website?
We do, yeah. I was going to go through the list that you guys had, that I asked for.
So the biggest thing is just to make sure that it stays up to date?
Yes.
That you include your financials after your monthly meetings?
Yes.
The whole purpose of that board's policy is just to make sure all of our parent groups are staying transparent, as long as you keep your website up to date with the officers and your monthly financials, your bylaws?
Right.
I think that's what the main expectation of the board is. Is that correct? Is there anything?
No, it's for us.
Okay. We are complying with everything but the 990 filing.
Okay.
We will put that up online. We have partnered with a group called Parent Boosters USA, which is a national organization that helps booster clubs. It really helps with transition, because once I move on after this, things get left on the wayside. With Parent Booster, there's always someone in contact who is reminded to do all those filings, 990, insurance and everything, so...
Now, president of the boosters, isn't that a six-year term?
No.
Just throw it out there like Senator.
Oh, I often, and one of the better things I did in the bylaws is I actually wrote myself out, because if you ask my wife, I'm involved in way too many things and get involved in way too many things. So in order to be on the board or a chairperson, you have to have a child attending school and be a member in good standing. And since my daughter graduates in a few days, my son graduated last year, I can no longer be the president. What we do do is the treasurer actually is a two-year term.
Okay.
And that is just to make, because when you come in as a treasurer and try and learn everything in a year and then you're gone, the transition just doesn't work. So we, we do have that.
Okay.
So we have, it's a couple of highlights. So anyway, with the, with the policy stuff, 990 will be up there. We are changing our website. We've been using 8 to 18, but it's not flexible enough for what we're doing. And when we change that website, everything will be on there. It'll be easier to find. All of that stuff will be listed. We're looking to handle all of our stuff through one, one website. We're working on that right now. One of the areas I did want to highlight were the donations that we have, that we have done, that is also in the, in the report. And under donations, currently, we've donated $24,716 back to the athletic department. The list is there. I won't go through all of them, but it's actually very rewarding to, to be able to sit on a board and do that much work and be able to donate that much money back to the programs. It's pretty well spread out across the board. The biggest thing that we fight with, and John and I were just talking about it, is trying to go, the coaches to remember to ask for money. We have more money to donate. We're trying to donate money, but the coaches need to put the letters in so that we can donate the money. And that's what we're there for. We truly enjoy doing it, so...
Any questions for the boosters? Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Mike.
Next one up is PTO.
Hello, my name is Mary Ellen Mindle, and I am the PTO president outgoing, because my son is also graduating in a few days. The PTO is a parent-teacher organization, and the only way that we get money is by donations in the beginning of the year, for the most part, because we have a directory, and we don't want to fundraise throughout the year, so we try to just have people join the PTO, pay $25, and that's all we ask for throughout the year. And it supports, and what we have found is it does support all the programs that we want to, to run. In my report, you saw the finances. We tried to spend, we tried to spend down to about $4,000, so we just have a rollover because we like to spend the money that people donated in that year. So that's, that's what we try to accomplish. Some of the highlights, we had a freshman family welcome at the beginning of the school year, chance for the freshman parents and their student to come into this school, there's a scavenger hunt, there are meeting with administrators, just a way for them to get into the school to feel a little bit more comfortable. We had an RB boutique before homecoming, where we sell dresses for $5 or $2, and they're all donated, so it's for girls that couldn't afford to go or get a dress, they can come. We've had theater groups come in and buy dresses, so it's, it's, it's a fun event. It's right at the school, doesn't cost us anything, so it's a way that we can help kids. We had Day of Service on April 28th. The weather was perfect, you never know. It's the single largest event where the students and staff give back to the community that supports them. So it's a lot of work, there are a lot of people involved, but it's, it's a neat event. We had the two, the two chairs, had two people shadowing them so that they can take over next year, trying to loosen, you know, try to lighten the load for them, because it's a lot of work. Another area is staff grants. We were able to provide over $3,000 to fund different things that staff wanted to do. This is our second year in our student summer enrichment, so students had the opportunity. It needed to be academic or leadership-based, not athletic or music, and if they were trying to do a camp, some type of camp or class during the summer, they could fill out an application and we would, we would fund it. So we were able to fund 12 scholarships. They ranged between $200 and $400 and $1,500 that these kids were able to get. And then new this year was the Martin Luther King Day of Service. It was an idea that was brought to us by a parent, and it took 90 minutes for the whole thing to happen. We were able, they were able to put together 100 survival kits in honor of Martin Luther King, because he believed in service. And the kits went to the Riverside Police Department, beds in La Grange, pads, well, it was North Riverside Police Department in Brookfield, and we received a lot of monetary donations. It was really easy to do. The committee is planning on ramping it up a little bit more this, this Martin Luther King. The new officers, you saw, there's eight officers on our board, three are new this year. The president is actually, she's courageous, she's an incoming freshman parent, so she hasn't been in the school. But there are other experienced board members, so hopefully she'll bring in some new energy and excitement, because it's hard to fill the president's position, because it's, people just, it's a lot of work. And it's a lot of responsibility, and a lot of people don't do it, so I'm hoping that she enjoys it, and maybe she'll stay president for a few years, because it's nice to have that consistency. It makes things easier for Kristen. The board, the new executive board will meet in a few weeks. They'll start getting things rolling. They will follow up with Kristen to make sure that all of the activities are lined up for the year. We do have a website. Our offices are listed, our financial information, our bylaws. This year, we added a question and answer for parents, so if they have any questions, they can go there, and there's almost anything you would ever want to know about being an RB student or an RB parent. And we'd like to thank Kristen for her continued support and the staff and the administration. It was a good year, and I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
We appreciate your service. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next one up is the Music Sponsors.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hari, and I am the president of Music Sponsors.
And I'm Anne Marie Dixon. I'm the treasurer of Music Sponsors.
So Music Sponsors is a parent organization. We promote the activities of the music department, help support students and the music directors. We encourage and maintain enthusiastic interest in all aspects of music programs. We maintain communication and cooperation between parents, administration, staff, and the school board. So our officers for next year are, will stay the same, going to stay on as president, and everyone else is going to stay on for one more year. I think next year, we'll have to, a lot of us are senior parents, and we'll have some turnover, so we'll be looking to replace a few positions. We currently have about 83 member families this year, so it's a little increase from last. In the course of the year, we provide awards, scholarships to the music students. We just had our yearly Apollo Awards, where we provided the awards, senior T-shirts, and we awarded 10 students, each a $200 scholarship for use for summer music lessons, classes, or other music activities. We provide support for marching band by helping with uniforms, providing water in the stands and at parades, refreshments for summer band camp. We organize many of the receptions after a lot of the musical performances, and we send the two new drum majors to camp in the summer. The cost for both of those students is around $1,800. We provide the music department teachers about $773 to purchase some end-of-the-year choral T-shirts. But our biggest highlight this year was our music department trip to New York City. I had the opportunity to chaperone the trip, and I can say it was a truly amazing opportunity. We were able to see two Broadway shows. For most of the students, it was probably their first time to New York, and to be able to see two shows was just amazing. The band performed on the flight deck of the Intrepid Aircraft Carrier, which is now a museum, and the choir students performed on the stage at Carnegie Hall. So quite, quite an amazing opportunity. We, the Music Sponsors fundraising efforts this year, we offered students who participated in selling candy, cheesecakes, or holiday ad book sales to receive part of the proceeds as trip credit. So out of 150 trip participants, 95 students took advantage of this in some way. We ended up giving about $11,000 back to students in trip credits. So credits per student ranged from $20 to $915, just depending on how much they sold. So again, you know, we want to thank the board for approving a trip that gave so many students some once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. It was great. And I roomed with board member Haruska, so we had a great time. So on the back page of the handout is our fiscal year 18 financial summary. We started the year with around $2,500, and our revenue from membership and fundraising came to about $40,000. Our expenses for the year will run around $38,700, and we're looking to start the new year with about $4,000. Our net profit from fundraising was around $7,700. We tried a couple of small new fundraising ideas this year. We sold flowers at our holiday concerts and the Apollo Awards. We just wrapped up a fundraiser for Nothing But Cakes, where we see, where we receive part of the profits for in-store purchases. Some things we hope to accomplish next year, we'd still like to continue to increase our membership. For residency days, we plan to start using the square card reader so that we can have parents with their credit card rather than trying to find cash. We plan to update some of our print media and signage over the summer to use and display at various events. We have maintained our website. It has general information, agendas, minutes. One thing we'd like to do next year, and we've already talked to our staff liaison Kylie Linquist about this, is possibly getting some student help from one of the classes, like the web design class. Maybe we'd like to make our website a little bit more robust, and unfortunately, none of us are web designers, so we thought maybe this could be a good opportunity for a student looking for service hours.
I think we can probably address that. That shouldn't be an issue.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank you very much. I've been in the school since 2002 with a student or something, and I think your participation this year, you were like everywhere this year. And just the amount of things that you did with the kids, and even the music program just really blossomed this year. I think it's, it's as large as it was when my, when Mr. Baum was in... I think it's, it's as large as it was when Mr. Baum was in school. I mean, it was just really tremendous. You brought a lot of energy and it's just a great job. The Apollo Awards, what a harvest, just incredible talent. I had no idea what that was and I was just amazed.
Yeah, I think this was the 10th year.
It was amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the-
Foundation.
Foundation.
Mr. Franco, counselor, Notre Dame graduate, president of the RV Foundation, Education Foundation.
Hi, I'm Jim Franco, president of the Educational Foundation. And so what you have in front of you is the, our, the last approved minutes from March, and then we'll approve April and May at our June meeting. We just did our, the grant basically decision was early May, so that was kind of our May, our May meeting. And then our fiscal year ends at the end of June. Everything on the website is up to date and current, other than that. So, you know, our big event is the telethon every year or so. We, in early March, and this year pled, you know, about $23,000 was pledged, so collected 21,180 of that. We had a little bit of money that we were able to carry over from last year. So there you see under number three, Roman numeral three, the amount that was awarded, you know, and broken down by students and faculty. So all the money raised from the telethon by our bylaws has to go to the grant recipients so if they want to do a workshop or a camp over the summer. And then we also have money in our general operating fund. So that could be like special requests. So the one thing was the screen for the main gym this year that we helped purchase. Sometimes we get, one of the Spanish teachers bought some books kind of out of her own money for kind of basically additional reading that students could do. And so she asked us for reimbursement. So we're going to, that money, we still have a good amount of money in there, but Gary Prokes got his, it was a art shop in, I think it was Lamont, it was like in the southwest suburbs that closed down. And he basically somehow got his hands on all their equipment, all the, all the art pieces they had. So we have like a ton of things that, we sold some of it at the telethon, but we're planning on doing a bizarre, holiday bizarre in December where we put all that on display. And then that money would go towards our general operating, general operating fund. In terms of, 11 is the amount of people, board members we can have right now, we have 10. So it would, you know, always be nice to have the maximum number allowed. Could always use help with telethon and then to mention the bizarre. And I think one thing that we definitely need to get better at is you'll have students like, so Mary Ellen Myle and I kind of coordinated, they're doing, they did a summer grant program as well. And so we coordinated notes to find out who applied to their summer grant and then who applied with ours. And then I reached out to the students that they might not have been able to help. And then some of those ended up applying to our grant. But it seems like we could do a better job of getting the word out to students that this grant, these grants are out here. Yeah, so I think that's one, one challenge we have and something that we'd like to do a better job of.
Jim, on the financials, which one is the operating account?
The-
The one you have general use fund?
Yes.
The Warren High Dose Scholarship Fund?
Yes.
That's what you consider for general use. And thank you for the donation. I think we split that correct.
Right, yeah.
And we purchased a board, we'll see that in action at the, at graduation for Kristen's slideshow before and after graduation. I think it's going to be used, correct?
Before graduation.
Before graduation, okay.
Any questions?
Thank you for your time, Mr. Franco. Thank you for volunteering. I'd just like to students, this is your chance, booster and parent groups, if you want to sneak out, now's a good time.
Thank you.
All right, principals report.
As you heard from the Music Sponsors last week, Thursday, the music teachers held the annual Apollo Awards to recognize the wonderful accomplishments of the music students. I did want to acknowledge this year, we had a student, Katie Leahard, who composed a song that was then performed by Concert Corral, Mandrills, Tremola Ensemble, and Chamber Orchestra. So that was a first. It was a surprise. I didn't know that was happening when we were at the concert. But it was a lovely performance and a small portion of it can be found on my Twitter account, which is on the RV website. Last Friday, we also had the senior class picnic in the fieldhouse where students received their yearbook, had lunch, took pictures in a photo booth, and raced one another in an inflatable obstacle course. We had a great turnout this year and I want to acknowledge Dave Mannan, who's here tonight for his leadership in organizing the event and making sure that when we were supervising a few hundred students that they were all fed and had a great time. Tomorrow is the second day of final exams, period four and five. And then later this week, graduation practice is scheduled for 11:30 a.m. on Friday, May 25th, and students should meet in the cafeteria for practice. And then graduation is held later that night at 6:30. And we expect students to arrive at 5:30 and again, meet in the student cafeteria and we'll be sending out reminders to students as well.
Any parents watching, if the weather is good, good weather, if you can walk, we would appreciate.
We would appreciate that. Also, for any parent that may be watching, we're still taking enrollment for summer school courses as well as any academic workshops that students might be interested in, athletic camps. Students and parents can sign up online and then payments can either be made online or in the business office. Parking permit applications for the 2018-19 school year are also online and can be found on the RV website. Applications aren't due until July and then right before residency will notify the students of whether or not they've received that parking pass. And then finally, our annual residency event has been scheduled for July 12th, 18th, and 24th, from 12:15 to 8 by appointment. And so additional information, we posted on our website. And then during the week of June 11th, we'll send out an invitation for parents to go ahead and sign up online for their residency appointment. Are there any questions?
Just crack it, that's all.
All right, so then we also have two reports that fall under the principals' report. And the first one is the spring athletic summary.
Sorry to invite Tom and Tom back up to the table.
Good evening. The memo that's up there kind of gives a summary of what the documents that we attached. And one was dropped on your desk up there because that updates, as of today actually, what was happening because some of the sports obviously are still continuing. But a quick summary is this year, in the spring, we saw a slight increase overall. The increases in baseball and soccer that had gone up nine and 10 respectively was a pretty significant increase in their case. Boys tennis had a really slight increase from 20 to 24, but considering the movement and the two-year trend, that's a good sign for them.
Mary, can you go to 55 so we can see the numbers that Tom's referring to? That's what you're referring to, right?
It's on the memo.
It's on the memo.
Yeah.
And then that kind of summarizes all of them. But the, most of the other sports went up, a couple here or there are down, so no significant changes in most of the other sports, pretty much stayed the same or again, changed a little bit, but a slight increase overall. I will kind of highlight some of the summer, I'm sorry, some of the spring female sports, starting with the coed Special Olympics track. They did complete, competed at the spring games in Aurora. They had their state qualifiers listed. These students on this list will be invited in June to get their certificates from you and be honored and presented here because everything will be complete by then, obviously. The Badwin team there had positive records on all levels and had a couple second-place finishes, had some good invites, including our own. And they're again continually getting increased numbers and a higher level of competition in the events that they've been performing at. Girls soccer had an outstanding record at 14, 4, and 3, second place in the conference. Softball, 17, 11. Junior varsity and freshmen had very powerful records at 23 and 3 and 13 and 4. The girls track and field has been completed and they've already, we had one state qualifier, Isabel, who was in the discus, and that was over last weekend. The girls water polo had an extremely good record this year at 23 and 8 and had two championships at the Elk Grove and at the, our own RV invite. And currently for the female sports, softball will be playing Thursday in the regional, so they're not complete yet. And John has one sport, the boys baseball, that's not complete, so.
And just, just so the board knows, I know we have some new board members this year. Tom scheduled all the girls athletic teams and I scheduled all the boys athletic teams. So we were including part of the hiring of coaches in those areas and also the evaluations and that. So just so you know, when, not that Tom favors the girls and I favor the boys, that's just who we report on.
They have three daughters.
So he does favor girls. He has two boys, so it worked out good. So as far as boys sports go, going the way Tom has it listed on the breakout, baseball still currently playing, lost a tough game tonight with Nazareth, a good program. So they are currently 25 and 7 overall, and they open up in the state playoffs on Thursday at Mount Carmel. And should be some good matchups over there, had a great season so far. And they finished in second place in the MSC Blue Division this year. You can see the success on all levels for baseball, sophomores and freshmen with very good over 20-win seasons. So looking for some good things. And as Tom said before, their numbers are up, so always a good thing to get the participation numbers there. All-conference, Ryan Sirmek was the player of the year in the conference and he's only a junior, so it'd be nice having Ryan come back next year. And he's got a scholarship to Illinois State when he graduates, so he'll be playing there. And a lot of, as you can see on, on the form, a lot of all-academic athletes were very proud of that in our activities and our sports. Moving on to the next boys, sport boys tennis, new head coach this year, Blake Schaefer, in the building, did a great job, kind of a rebuilding year for boys tennis. Numbers were up and a highlight would be the second-place finish at the Willowbrook Invite. Tom and my alma mater, so we're proud to see us play well at Willowbrook. And the learning process on the JV level, a lot of our boys need to get more involvement in the summer program, so hopefully we'll get those guys and girls signed up for our summer camps this year. And again, many more all-academic athletes in the boys tennis program. Moving down to boys water polo, Coach Wolak's team finished up with a 13-17 overall record, lost to a tough St. Rita team in the sectionals, but a pretty good nucleus coming up next year for them on the JV level. And Charles Robling had a fine season, all-sectional athlete for the boys water polo team, also a 12-sport athlete, which we're very proud of, our athletes that compete three sports all four years, he's one of them of a few. There's not as many left as there used to be. Boys track and field still going. We've got 10 athletes going to the state tournament. Mr. Keen's son, one of them. So we congratulate all our boys. As you can see, the, the athletes listed, state qualifiers, Jason Noel, Miles Rubio, Brendan Chika, Jacob Orzala, George Cervanka, Chris Magno, Devin Moody, Jack Sagan, David Keane, and Joshua Ramp will be representing RB on Friday, starting at noon. So we're hoping for some good news down there and if they got to hustle back for graduation and then hopefully get back down for the finals on Saturday if they qualify. And they were also MSC Conference Champions for the sixth year in a row, so very proud of what they're doing in the program. Boys volleyball, unfortunately, lost tonight, so finished up a tough loss to Naperville Central, good program. Boys had a good year, 22 and 15 overall. And they've got some rebuilding to do with the lower level. Our Booster Club president, who you met earlier tonight, was also one of our freshman boys volleyball coaches. Did a nice job as a volunteer for us in the program, so. And Jason Bajanas, another fine athlete in that program, got a volleyball scholarship. He'll be playing.
One addition, the girls water polo, we had an all-state girl, Tatum Bruno, was just recognized and Coach Fidrich had brought that down, so will be getting her picture taken and obviously being on the Pride Walls All-State, which is a very high-level accomplishment, obviously.
One of the things that we don't have a report done yet because some sports are still going, if you were involved with some of the meetings last year, we didn't produce a document that showed the attendance initiative that we're doing in the athletic department. And that includes being there daily, being on time, being in school, obviously grades would improve if you're in school. So I know that overall, as we continue on through the process, we were averaging about 97.5% attendance throughout the spring. So that's an outstanding number for the amount of athletes that we're putting out. And also that goes in conjunction with the GPA, so many of our sports will be recognized by the IHSA for the all-state, all-academic teams as well. So I think we have probably 75% of our teams that will be recognized for that. And that plaque's right outside our office, so if you want to see that. Just want to make mention.
Any questions?
You guys mentioned three sport athletes. How many three-sport athletes do you have?
Two seniors.
Two seniors?
Yeah, the lower levels, there's more, obviously, but as they get-
We're hoping they continue on.
As they get to the senior year, it does, doing them for lots of obvious reasons, with specialization, club sports, you know, a lot of, we've actually had some that just because of classwork, they said, you know what, I just can't do that, next sport. And good reasons, you know, but it does take up more time than it did when we were all in school, obviously, and it's changing. But it's very, very rewarding to see them when they, they do enjoy it, obviously, when they're involved every season.
So Charlie, and do we know the other one? Who was the other?
I don't want to say who's, I don't have it with me.
Brandon, I believe? We recognized him at senior awards tonight.
Yeah, senior awards, I got recognized at the senior awards on the fifth.
Tom, John, thank you again for the three years. And Tom, you're going to stick around a little, a capacity of the mentor for Brendan, so we appreciate you agreeing to that.
Yeah, we're just going to have discussions and keep-
And Brendan's in the background observing this meeting, so he knows how these things work and ready to jump in with two feet. And John, thank you for taking my call three years ago when I said, hey, I need an interim.
Glad you made the call.
Appreciate all that you have done and helped us get on board here.
Thank you.
So thank you again, both of you.
Thank you all of you.
Thank you. And the last report under the principals' report is our technology report.
We typically report out to the board twice a year. So joining us is Bridget Woma, Instructional Technology Coordinator, Mike Connors, Technology Director, and Kylie Lindquist, Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction.
Just, yeah, just push the chair up, Mike.
I'm just here to introduce these fine people who think all of the technology that happens here happened and it wouldn't be possible without both of them. So I'm just going to sit here and look nice while they steal the show.
Good evening. I'm going to give the first part of the report and then I'll hand it off to Bridget. If you look at the first part of the report, you'll see this upcoming summer, our plans to upgrade our broadband and also to upgrade our firewall. This is because the final year, this year, after, the beginning of this year, the entire school have Chromebooks, so we'll be getting additional 400 devices put onto our network. So we'll be doing the upgrades in order to handle that. And also we have to upgrade the firewall because of the broadband upgrade. The next section is the finance and funding. As you can see, the first section is the one-to-one revenue. I know that there was a question from one of the board members about, we had a surplus this year of $4,491. The reason for the surplus was that we had, this year's freshman class was a little larger than normal. Also, the outstanding fees were more and more collected, and so that's why we have a surplus. surplus there. If you look at the expenditures, we have a surplus there too. That's due to some of the repairs coming in a little lower than expected and paid services, equipment and some of the supplies, some of the prices, just we got better deals than when we first made the budget. Is there any questions about that section?
And any surplus or deficit that's collected goes into the general ledger then writes out, so I mean, it's used for budget-y purposes next year. I think it's good to clarify that.
Okay. Bridget?
We don't have a formal presentation. Instead, we have a playful look at technology at RB. So it's a little bit longer, it's about nine minutes, so I-
Welcome to the special edition.
Let's do it. I don't think, I don't think formal afterwards, but if you have any questions, obviously I'm more than happy to answer them.
Why don't we click, may I click the square in the, keep going, right corner of that box, right there. Okay.
... of the full-blown report. I'm Amy Lighter, it's of Student Services. In today's episode, we'll be watching three vignettes about how technology is used at RBHS. Up first, with a year-end review, are two English teachers, Tom Dignan and Wendy Cassens.
Hi, I'm Tom Dignan.
And I'm Wendy Cassens.
We're here to take a look back at some of the highlights that helped shape an extraordinary year of tech and learning at RB.
Faculty members participated in teacher-led workshops from designing memes for classroom content management to connecting with educators and classrooms through hashtag Twitter.
Also, they used embedded department tech time for a variety of collaborative purposes, including investigating how to research with Evernote, improved SAT performance with Khan Academy, design rubrics in School G for standards-based assessment, and enhance instruction with online textbook components.
There were opportunities to improve knowledge about tech integration, including day-long workshops like creating your one-to-one classroom, new teacher orientations and mentoring programs, paraprofessional training, and conferences, including the Illinois Computing Educators Conference and the International Society of Technology and Education Conference.
To remain on the cutting edge of tech integration, staff members participated in a variety of pilots, including Go Guardian Teacher, the School G Grade Book, and touchscreen Chromebooks.
At the May faculty meeting, teachers participated in a tech fair where staff members presented about the multiple tech tools they incorporated into their curriculum, including EdPuzzle for flipped classrooms, Issue for digital content creation, Peergrade for peer learning, and TED Ed, that's not a person, for digital lessons worth sharing.
You're just full of information, Wendy. Staff members' hard work this year was recognized when RB, you know-
Not RB?
We were named a Google for Education Reference District, which is a district that demonstrates excellence and thought leadership through the innovative use of technology.
Sounds like quite a year. It deserves 10 out of 10 apples or touchscreen Chromebooks or something like that.
Thank you for joining us.
Moving on. As we all know, achievements like this reflect the hard work of many different people. To spotlight some of these individuals, Fine Arts teacher Blair Jensen, who also won like as a special investigator, shares his work from the field.
Since calling the tough case, we're gonna need our best agent, the best of the best.
So Ms. Irwin, without getting too serious into the elements of design, principles of art, and without being too artsy-fartsy, could you tell me, how has technology given your students independence in your classroom?
Technology gives them freedom and independence by allowing them to research right on the spot in the studio and looking at Google and Pinterest and School G. Kids can organize their visual ideas and then I can also give them feedback at any time in product ideas over email or over School G.
Do you mind recording these answers?
No.
How do you use digital portfolios to give immediate portfolio assessments in the class?
I can grade from photos in a digital portfolio that I put on School G and students can access their grades on the rubrics on there as well, which immediately calculates it and gives them feedback, so they can have their stuff back right away and they know what they should improve on instantaneously.
Okay, well, I have one more question. How has technology strengthened your curriculum?
Now I teach from all the links that I've previously loaded on there and all the documents and just get to improve it every semester. And then I even had students add, edit to courses that they weren't actually in just to learn new mediums and further their practice. And lastly, it helps with collaborating with other teachers if everything's ready to go.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go along, do you need anything else? Everything's cool? Okay. So, Mr. McGovern, bruh, am I a buddy, bruh? A part of School G is so effective between the teacher and the student.
One of my favorite tools in School G to use is the Mastery Tracker. What it allows me to do is assign certain skills to each of my assessments that allows me to track their growth through each quarter, semester, and year.
Cool, cool, great answer, McGovern. Hey, do you mind if I take notes on my, no, I'm pretty tech savvy myself, so don't beat around the bush if you don't mind. I got another question for you. Where do you think the one-to-one initiative will take us in the future?
It's McGovern. And where I think the one-to-one environment is really gonna help our students is it allows them access to countless amount of resources, from looking up a definition of a word to accessing and researching more complex skills.
Dude, you're starting to sound like you know what you're talking about. I like it. So what advice do you have for new teachers, old teachers that are in the building?
I think what teachers really need to do is not overwhelm themselves or their students. Maybe just pick one tool to use to implement this year and another tool to implement next year. That way, as the years progress, you become more comfortable with the technology in your classroom.
Cool, cool, very cool. Cool. Awesome.
This one's pretty heavy. Do you need me to spare? Do you need me to?
Uh, go, go, I don't need you. So, Mr., I have some questions about your tools you've been using in your classroom. What's this thing called, palette? What is that all about?
First of all, it's called palette and we use it for our questions in class, so that the kids have access to them on computer whenever they want, instead of it being little pieces of paper in front of the classroom that they can't read.
Uh, Ms. Sterling, also, you don't need to be grumpy on me, but I do want to know about this Schoology rubics, rubics you've been using in your classroom. Could you tell me about that?
Again, it's School G, not Schoology, and they use the rubrics to keep track of their graded assignments on a real-time basis as it's entered in the computer, so parents can see exactly what grades they have in their class as I'm entering them in.
Okay, Ms. Sterling, without getting too aggressive, and don't make me go get a Type 75, just tell me about this Khan Academy that you have the kids, I don't know, doing stuff with it?
Well, we use Khan Academy every day, so they can do skills-based homework and have better access to practice that is individualized for each student.
Our teachers certainly are finding innovative ways to promote 21st century learning, which keeps the students from dozing off. Wait, wait. I've just gotten word that we've been given special permission to share a sneak preview of what's next with Tech at RB. Oh, does this feel delightful? Oh, thanks for that preview. Sounds like our district has built a strong foundation for some exciting adventures ahead. Thanks to all who helped produce this special edition.
So Bridget, as we enter into our last year, everybody's on board, so obviously people, teachers are, may I rephrase? As, as we enter into the last year, is there anything that you need from the board or that the board should be aware of, or I mean, it's starting to become, would you say, part of our day-to-day operation here?
Sure, I definitely think it's starting to become part of the fabric of RB. I think it's becoming as much of a material as a textbook would be for class. I think the biggest thing is just the continued support of embedded professional development for teachers to continue growing and finding authentic ways to incorporate the tech.
Okay. And Mike, you're taking care of the infrastructure?
Yes.
And I know Kylie, you and Kristen and Bridget put a lot of time in this year, so the PD that was occurring, was that once a month we were doing a tech piece within our PLCs or how did that work again? So the board's aware of that, because as you talk about PD, they'll, they'll think about stuff over the summer or workshops. We also did a lot of staff on staff, like staff training staff, correct?
Yes. Yep. We give up one faculty meeting per quarter that we dedicate to tech PDs, so that's where Bridget comes in and she and I look at, you know, what she thinks are the needs that our teachers have based on her collaboration with teachers and based on instructional coaches and then Bridget designs the professional development experience for that month, that quarter. The one that we had most recently was kind of a showcase where teachers, kind of in a science fair type situation, where teachers got to go around to different staff members and talk about what's been working in their classrooms and ask questions and see things at work. But the PD and the embedded time for PD has been critical to the success of the one-to-one initiative, I think, and Bridget has really done a nice job of working with teachers to not just replace, you know, and, and have the Chromebook as something extra in the classroom that we, now we look at papers on the Chromebook and we look at text on the Chromebook instead of in our textbook and really helping teachers take their use of technology to the next level and that's all credited to Bridget. I had a staff member tell me, a staff member that I would consider to be pretty tech savvy and someone who uses technology and would have used it if we didn't have Bridget in her capacity. And he said to me, you know, I wouldn't do half the things I do with technology if I didn't have the confidence that Bridget is there to help me figure out, what does this tool look like? How can I use it in my classroom? Sometimes use it with her own students, now that she's teaching one English section in addition to her roles as the tech coordinator. So she's an invaluable resource to our staff and we've really been able to see staff members who would have adopted and who wouldn't have come to a whole new place and surprised themselves even because of the work that Bridget's been able to do with them. So it's really been, the PD that Bridget has structured has really been powerful and impactful for our staff.
And in addition to those four times of the year, Bridget also holds Lunch and Learns or Opportunities when we're piloting something for staff members to drop in during their prep periods to learn about it, as well as Institute Days. So a large portion of what Bridget does is hold large sessions like that, as well as like individually conferencing with teachers to help tailor whatever they're doing in their classrooms, specific to what their needs are. And then she's willing to push into their classrooms to make sure it's a success. She really provides wraparound support to staff members as they incorporate technology into their classroom.
And then in addition to that, we also hold day-long workshops focused on different groups. So day-long workshops for teachers who are brand-new to one-to-one, as well as day-long workshops for teachers who are brand-new to RB. So lots of opportunities and I'm looking, next year they have day-long workshops for veteran teachers who need just a little bit more help figuring out how to incorporate tech in the classroom, because they already have successful lessons. So they don't always under, know exactly how tech is going to supplement those successful lessons.
What did we decide? We were piloting the touchscreens, the freshmen getting touchscreens, or we still sticking with the?
The tablets were piloted by the teachers.
Okay, so. And are we, are we starting to implement those for teachers or they didn't come out, that didn't come out, or?
Uh, we, we just were asked a survey to kind of get a scope on how they're being used and stuff like that and we're just not sure exactly if it's the right move to go to tablets. The Chrome operating system really isn't calibrated to be a tablet, you know, unlike, you know, an app, an iPad. So we're kind of still waiting that out to see if that's something to do in the future.
So we're going with a similar model like the board has in front of them tonight?
Yeah, yeah, that's what the, these students will be getting.
We're not having any issues with the insurance and our tech repairs and kids that are having issues?
No, they've been fine.
Oh, that's been working well?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Bridget, how often do you give pride fights?
Yes.
How often? One?
Oh, we, yep, once a year.
Once or twice, one?
Yep, we, we did the survey in May and we're going to go into detail at it at the December meeting, but exciting news is, I still need to dive deeper into the data, but our overall score increased by 13 points, which pushed us out of the proficient category into the advanced category, which is very exciting. There's five categories, exemplary, advanced, proficient, et cetera. And that's amazing considering that everyone took the survey, including our seniors who are not one-to-one. So to be in the advanced category with having one whole class, not even one-to-one, we're, our teachers and staff members are doing some pretty stellar things here.
That is amazing. That is amazing.
It's really exciting. So we'll be doing a deeper dive into it in December though, but that's, that's a sneak peek for you.
Okay, great, great. Well, with the turnover rate here so low, you don't need to give it, I don't think, more than once a year. We give it twice a year because we have such a high turnover rate. We want to see the growth. We give it in September and then again in May, but once a year.
Yeah, and now that we've given it three years, we actually can truly look at trends and our trend is decidedly upward. There's four main domains and then the overall score, and in all four domains, it's up, up, up. I mean, I should have done an average, but we're looking probably an average of 12 to 13-ish points increase in every single domain, which is really exciting.
Any other questions? No?
Great job, Bridget.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Kylie, thank you. Michael, thank you. Put the suit away till December, Mike. Mr. Man, are you stuck around?
I'm actually made.
That's very nice. Did she stick around the last time you had her present? I don't remember.
I probably had to call him out the last time.
Oh, that's right. You left early, that's right.
We'll do that again.
Lesson learned.
This is an opportunity for visitor statements. Seeing no visitors in the audience, we will move on to chance for Board of Education to add any additional discussion items, looking to my left. Oh, I missed, I missed Chief Financial Officer reporting, excuse me, I'm sorry. Scott, you're up, I'm sorry.
All right.
Poor guy.
You did the budget, you know, I figured.
That's all right. We can go to Board Book Page-
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one. Sixty-one we'll start at. And I'd like to highlight the April monthly financials. This represents 83% of our current year. Total monthly revenue for all funds for the month of April was $840,000. Real estate taxes accounted for $184,000. General state aid payment was $182,000. We did receive a special ed transportation payment of $83,000 from the state and we did also receive a corporate property placement tax payment from the state of $72,000. On the expenditure side, total monthly expenditures was roughly $1.8 million. Once again, salary and benefits, that's our biggest expenditure, that accounted for $1.45 million. And our out-of-district tuition accounted for $72,000 for the month of April. Our operating fund balance at the end of April is $18.6 million. I just want to remind the public that the Board of Education has restricted $3 million of that in the working cash fund, which the actual balance is $15.6 million for the operating fund balances. If we move to Board Book Page 62 and look at the financial statements, the first page that you come to, you will see where our beginning balances were of all funds, plus the- plus the revenue minus, minus the expenditures, giving us our end-of-the-month balances as of April thirtieth. If we look at the revenue side on Board Book Page sixty-three, you will see that our revenues are all over budget in our operating funds, except for the operations and maintenance, um, fund, which is Fund Twenty. I am expecting to receive, uh, from the state, uh, one more additional corporate property tax, uh, replacement tax, uh, revenue source there, and also, uh, a payment for cell tower rental should be coming in at the end of this month or the beginning of, uh, June. So with that being said, I believe that our operations and maintenance should be at a hundred percent or just slightly over budget. The counts that are way out of whack with the percentages, uh, once the amended budget is adopted, the amended amounts will be placed in here to reflect it. So in the May financials, um, it will be reflected, uh, more closely, you won't see those big giant percentages.
That's basically just on the working cash, correct?
Working cash and the, uh...
Life safety. Okay.
And also the debt service with the refinancing. If we move on to Board Book Page sixty-four, on the expenditure side, all the operating funds are tracking right at where I'm expecting them to track at. Um, once again, if everything comes in correctly as I'm seeing it, uh, we should come in at budget or slightly better than budget within our operating funds. Uh, the capital projects fund does look way over budget at a hundred and eighty-two percent. The original budget amount of the four thirty-eight, that only took into account the cost for the new tennis courts and the parking lot. The additional money that was spent is the money that was retained by the district in the previous phase for the stadium project, and as Phase Three was getting completed, payment was dispersed to those, uh, contractors, which put that over budget on that. Moving on to the revenue expense report, I tried to put a summary for the board to look at of counts that I felt were very obvious as to, okay, are they over budget, under budget? Um, I'm not going to go through all of them. Uh, there were some questions submitted on the revenue expense report on Board Book Page sixty-nine. Uh, there was a question on the technology fees that was addressed by our tech director, Mike Connors. Uh, the additional fees were from transfer students or payments from outstanding, uh, fees from prior years. On Board Book Page seventy, under tech-enhancing education, um, as a reminder, the district did receive FY seventeen grant money and FY eighteen. The remainder of the money is actual FY eighteen reimbursement dollars for career and technical education. Uh, Board Book Page seventy-three, under transportation, um, the account on that one is ten thousand dollars over. The payments that we received were two payments from FY sev-, um, FY seventeen and then two payments from FY eighteen. I am not expecting the state to release any other payments on that, so our next payments will be in FY nineteen. On Board Book Page seventy-nine, under health insurance, currently right now, all of our health insurance is being billed under the general account. Uh, what needs to happen here within the, either this month or the next month, is a journal adjustment to reflect the actual cost for our special education department and our superintendent's office. So if you were to look through the revenue expense, you will see that right now the expended amount in the special ed department for health insurance, dental insurance and life insurance is currently sitting at zero, and also in the superintendent's office is sitting at zero. There will be a journal adjustment made to reflect the actual cost for those departments. Uh, Board Book Page eighty-one, under Title One, non-certified salaries, there was an additional salary that was billed to this account incorrectly. A journal adjustment has already been made this month. It will be reflected on the May financials, so that line item will not be over budget. Uh, the correct account was billed, and it should reflect accurately.
Those are all your questions?
Uh, that was all the questions submitted on the revenue expense. If we move on to the student activity accounts, the same two accounts are still in the negative, uh, which is alumni achievement and the Illinois Virtual, um, School. Uh, working on trying to get those back down to, uh, being balanced or in the positive. Uh, you will see that, uh, we do have fundraising coming in and out throughout these activity accounts.
What's the Illinois Virtual School account for?
Uh, the, uh, it's an online...
Right, but what are we, Kristen, why do we have an activity account for that? Do you know?
I do not.
It's basically an in-and-out. The student pays for the class, comes in with the revenue, pays for their, for their credit.
Okay. I mean, the alumni achievement, I think that runs through the Alumni Achievement Board, they meet every other year, unless we get enough donations. I mean, sometimes we run in the red, Mary Ann, right, for the plaques and some of the, we've tried to cover our costs the best we can with that, correct? But that's probably not going to get brought up to speed until the next time we do alumni achievement and see if we get enough to cover.
To cover the...
Could you, could you remind me what the testing activity account is?
So that's, that's primarily used for AP tests with College Board, and so all of the student fees are funneled into that, and so, um, if the balance, I'm assuming, is still very high.
It's pretty large, yeah.
We haven't made the payment to College Board yet, since AP tests have just completed last Friday.
The invoice will be coming.
So that will go down significantly.
Why are we running it through an activity account?
Student fees in and then goes right back out, and if a kid decides not to take the test, we reimburse him.
Right, so why are we running it through an activity account?
We, uh, up until this year, all of our student fees went through an activity account.
Right, so when we moved some over, why didn't we move that one, since AP is part of our school program? I don't understand.
I will say the benefit of the activity account in this case is, um, that by being able to carry a slight balance, um, we can also use that money the next year if we need to purchase some additional tables or have some additional proctors based off of accommodations or things of that nature, and those, um, can vary from year to year, and we can't always predict, uh, what those are going to be the following year.
I don't know. Thought it's part of our school activity, it should be running through as a budgeted account and, I don't know.
We could talk more about it, I mean, we haven't written them, since I've been here, it hasn't run through there.
Yeah, I know, I know, it hasn't, because I thought we moved some over last year.
We moved all the student fees accounts because what was happening was, like, in English, math, et cetera. If for this, since this is just a check, like a checking account, it was a checkbook.
Right.
When, when we collect the student fees, there's no way to put in the money for the twenty percent free and reduced lunch. So all, every year, English, math, science, a lot of them are running at a negative balance because there's no district money to offset that. So there, that's why we push this to, uh, we push those accounts to a district account because in this way, the fees are collected, the board puts in the difference for the free and reduced lunch, and then, uh, it eliminates running negative balance here and then having these other accounts cover their negative balance. We reimburse students that don't take the test? It's part of their initial fee for AP, right? So you could have several hundred, not several hundred, but you could have a hundred refunds coming in, you know?
Yes, that happens sometimes with our senior students, especially if they've gotten, um, accepted into a college and they find out that their college doesn't give them college credit for a particular test, or, um, sometimes that happens with our AP English students, they get credit for Lit but not Lang, and so then they don't need that test, and so they ask for a reimbursement.
So I think it's because it's more, it's more fluid in there.
Or if they drop, correct.
Scott, were you, did you have any questions that were submitted on the activity accounts?
No questions were submitted on the activity accounts.
Ready to, uh...
That's it for his report?
That's it. All right. I'll ask visitor statements, no visitors, I'll move on to discussion items to my right, discussion items.
Sometime, not now, whenever, maybe over summer. I feel that our student recognition, we keep missing our students if we have a better idea, because it's our business beating, or if this doesn't work for them. I hate to see, and we try to acknowledge them at the board and somehow we just don't seem to get it. So it's not important, just something to start mulling around.
There's, I think there's also to be maybe, uh...
Coming back at some...
Desire to come also?
Right.
Well, that, so maybe this isn't the best venue, so that's what I'm thinking, so, like I said, just to start making...
Well, gives them opportunity to come up in front of the board, to be on TV, right, you know?
Be nice, but, yeah.
All right, um...
No update on the radios, old business?
Old business, life savings, capital improvements?
Uh, we just, Scott's, I think the striping for parking lot?
Striping should be done on Saturday.
And so that would close out all punch list items from Phase Three, our construction projects, and then the facilities committees, council is meeting with, um, Joe, me and Scott on Thursday, just to discuss the projects we have planned to address this summer.
All right, um, adopt the amended budget?
Need the resolution.
Yep, let's read the resolution.
Page one oh nine.
One oh three.
Is it one oh three?
One oh three, here.
I'm sorry.
Resolution adopting two thousand seventy, two thousand eighteen amended budget.
That's it?
That's it. Whereas the Board of Education of Township High School District Number Two Oh Eight, County of Cook, State of Illinois caused to be prepared in tentative amended form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least thirty days prior to the final action thereon. Whereas a public hearing was held to such budget on the twenty-second of May, two thousand eighteen, notice of said hearing was given at least thirty days prior to their, prior thereto as required by law and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section one, that the fiscal year of this school district be, and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July first, twenty seventeen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Section two, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures for each be, and the same is hereby adopted as the amended budget of the school district for said fiscal year.
Second?
Second.
You got a discuss additional discussion now? Go for the vote.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Rusko?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes. We have a fine, now we go to new business, final calendar, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
It's a formality, formality required by the state, but the board needs to just formally approve the final calendar for the school district, uh, with no use of the emergency days.
Sure.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two Oh Eight, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the final two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar with the emergency days of May twenty-fifth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, thirty-first, and June first, two thousand eighteen eliminated to be submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education as presented in the May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Any discussion? Can I go for the vote?
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Rusko?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich?
Yes.
We go to tentative budget for fiscal two thousand nineteen, first read?
Scott has presented a first read, uh, for the Board of Education on the FY nineteen budget. You will see this again at your June meeting, and it will have the May thirtieth, uh, actual, so it'll get you a little closer to a full fiscal year. Um, but this basically will give you two weeks to review, uh, the information. I'll have Scott, in a minute here, present the, uh, outlook and the general assumptions or key assumptions. Uh, I believe there were one or two short questions submitted, and Scott addressed those. Um, but overall, uh, you'll see that the budget's with a projection of a roughly a deficit at this point, just over a hundred and ten thousand. Now, I anticipate that will go up slightly. You know, if we have hire any new staff, we make, uh, uh, some, some bills come in slightly higher than what expected, but it should be below two hundred thousand. Um, so, um, trending in the right direction. Okay, Scott, any key highlights for the board?
Okay, if we will look at the revenue assumptions, the biggest, um, increase here is the property taxes, trying to get a better handle on, uh, making it so that when you look at the revenue expense report, it, it doesn't have that big difference between prior year being a hundred and eight and current year at like ninety-six. So budgeting a little different in that, and then also increasing it from ninety-eight and a half to ninety-nine, that generates additional revenue in property taxes. That's the biggest increase from, uh, the FY eighteen budget to the, um, FY nineteen budget. The other increase is the change in the funding formula for general state aid, it's now evidence-based funding. Uh, you will notice, um, that the old state categorical, some of them have been zeroed out, uh, which is, majority of those are your special education ones, those are now added into our new funding formula. Uh, there is a big increase in that, uh, roughly our base minimal is the one point eight two five, three five oh for next year. Those are the two big pieces there.
But of that, Scott, that's really money we already had.
We already had.
So the only new increase in state funding is how much roughly, approximate?
Uh, roughly seventy-three thousand.
Okay.
You get a little extra in some fee collections that we have, little extra in additional revenue, um, potentially with, uh, vending or rentals increase on the revenue side. If we move to the expenditure side for the key assumptions, the main one that is the increase is our salaries for certified staff. Approximately, this is going to be an increase of three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from the previous year. This takes into account our collective bargaining increases, uh, for staff, one through thirty, they get thirty-eight hundred dollars increase, and anyone over thirty would get twenty-one hundred. This also takes into account the one oh four point six FTE that was approved by the board, uh, there's placeholders in the budget for that. Um, insurance cost is another one that has an increase. This increase is due to, um, the last census that was ran for our entire staff. Uh, some of the reasons why it's going to increase is during open enrollment, some of our teachers actually took the insurance, who waived it. Um, throughout the course of the year, we had people who moved from single to family to increase it, and then our new hires, uh, throughout the course of the year, some have taken the insurance. So that increase there is all accounted for, um, of the hundred and fifteen, I have that accounted for, for the increase. Um, I do know that I presented to the board that through our EBC Cooperative Medical, that it was going to stay flat, but these dollars account for the change in the plans for the staff. Uh, there is an increase in our operations and maintenance telephone and increase line item. I moved backup internet from our technology department and moved everything that's associated with the telephone and internet into one account to be more accurate on it, so that account in our operations and maintenance line item will show an increase, and then in our technology department, you'll see a decrease in our paid service. Some of the other increases, um, are basically to match what's in the collective bargaining. There were a few stipend positions that were not accounted for in the FY eighteen budget, which have been accounted for in the FY nineteen budget. So there will be some variation to these stipends. And then there's also some significant expenditures that, um, we need to wait a little longer here to see what the actuals are going to come in at. Some of the key ones would be our out-of-district tuition for special education. I am working with our special ed director... I am working with our special ed director to make sure that the number that I received to be put into the budget is accurate. So I want to cross-reference with that to make sure if that line item needs to stay the same, or does it need to be increased.
We put our out-of-district tuition, it's not under special in the budget, correct?
That is correct. It's under a different function.
It's under a different function? What function?
Under nineteen-ten, nineteen-twelve.
Which is what, I received a question earlier on that, I didn't submit it by accident.
Okay, let's see if I can get the page.
Just ten, nineteen-twelve, it's out-of-district tuition?
Out-of-district tuition. It's currently budgeted at nine-twenty-two. It's looking like it's going to be over budget currently in this year, depending on what invoices come in here. So that's something that we're watching closely, and I want to make sure that I cross-reference with our special ed director on what the actual out-of-district placements are.
All right, so then why don't you just quickly go through the summary on page one-fifteen, is that? That's the snapshot of everything, correct?
Yep. The big picture summary is a snapshot of everything, detailing every fund. With it, let's see here, if you highlight, the main focus is if you just go down the columns, it gives you what our revenue would be versus our expenditures, what the deficits would be in each fund account, and in the middle of it, you'll see the deficit of one-twelve, that is excluding the two-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer from working cash to capital projects for potential land acquisition on that, potentially for the fields. If you look, though, at our projected fund balances on the bottom, with the two-point-eight million, if you look at our fund balance, our fund expenditures versus our operating fund balance, we'd be sitting at a fifty-five percent. I just want to remind again that the board has restricted three million dollars, two-hundred of that would be used in our FY-nineteen budget, leaving the two-point-eight, which is restricted. And with our current operating fund expenditures versus the remaining fund balance, we still would be sitting at forty-four-point-one-two percent.
So basically about four months.
Yes.
Yeah. And the board has a policy that requires us to maintain a thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three percent.
Any questions from the board? There's no action on this tonight, so we'll see it again in June.
One of your assumptions was on the property taxes, that historically we were budgeting ninety-eight-point-five collection rate.
Yes.
You see, and you moved it up to ninety-nine?
To ninety-nine.
So another half percent. So, and the reason for that is because of recent collection rates?
On our tax collection rate, I do have a chart that tracks from two thousand eight until two thousand sixteen showing it. Our three-year average is at ninety-nine percent, the five-year average was ninety-eight-point-six, six-year was ninety-eight-point-three-eight. Just keeping with the trend, being that the three-year is the most current, looking at it, ninety-nine percent seemed more feasible versus the ninety-eight-point-five.
All right, so in our budget before, budgeting ninety-eight-point-five was a reasonable percent based on some historical rate?
Based on three years, historical.
But now, in the most recent three years, we've been seeing it going back up to ninety. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
All right.
Matters for closed.
We have matters for closed, session personnel, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. This is a second opportunity for visitors to have statements, seeing no visitors. We will go on to, we didn't have any discussion items, correct? And consideration of items for future meetings.
That was the possibility to discuss recognition.
All right, can we get a motion to go into closed?
Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-Aid Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, or lease of real property probable or imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiation, and school safety.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so you guys down there in town?
Yep.